Okay, let me call our meeting to order. This is the school board meeting. Oh. That's the first time I've used it. That's kind of fun. Sorry. So, everybody, I'm going to call to order our school board meeting for November 25, 2019. This is the school board meeting of Independent School District Number 283. Thanks, everybody, for coming. It's really just so delightful to look out and see a roomful of parents and students. Oftentimes, there's one or two souls in this room, and it's not students and it's not parents. So, this is really much more fun for us. So, welcome. First up, we're going to do a spotlight, and we're going to start with the fall sports state participants, kicked off by Andy Ewald.
Well, thank you. Wow. Thank you. I'm Andy Ewald. I'm the district's athletic director. We are going to start with girls' swimming, and our head coach, Amanda Forsberg, who's also a math teacher here at the high school. So, Amanda, if you want to come up and talk about girls' swimming.
Hi. I'm Amanda Forsberg. I'm the girls' head coach. We had a phenomenal season this year. We had a lot of great leadership at the top from our seniors and juniors, and we had an influx of kind of younger talent. We had two pool records broken this year, one by Franny Bevel, who was a senior captain with a 58.6, and then also the 500 free by Ellie Grassley, who's a junior, 517. Yeah, clap for yourself. It's fine. And I know that the one record for Franny has been, she's been eyeing that for years. So, I'm glad she finally got it on her senior year, and she kind of crushed it. So, that was great. So, we had, like I said, a great season. We had sections went ridiculously well. We had kids drop in 10, 15 seconds, which you normally don't see. And then, we had a pretty good contingency at state. This was also the first year that we had everyone qualify for day two of state, which we've never had. So, for those of you that don't know in the swimming world, you have everyone swim day one, who makes the cut, and then the top 16 make day two. So, that was impressive for us to have everybody that swam on day one make day two. So, I'll just ask the girls to come up, and I can kind of run through what they swam and how they did. You guys want to come up here? So, we had a relay team. My relay team was Tenzin, Hattie, Franny, and Grace, and they placed 13th at state, and they all had personal bests either on day one or day two. So, that was great. Good job. Franny swam the 100 fly. This is her first time making an individual event to state, and she also finished 13th with a, again, she broke the team record with 58.6. Ellie swam the 500 free. Again, this was her first time swimming an individual event. She actually sat out most of last year with a shoulder injury. So, this was great to see her come back and not only do well, but then qualify for state at the same time. And again, she broke our team record in the 500 free. And then, Hattie, she has swam breast at state actually quite a few years in a row, and she's kind of moved up every year, and this year, she finished second, which was great. So, nice job. That's all I got.
Here. Let's do this. Come get your certificates. Ellie. There you go. Congratulations. Grace. Franny.
Thank you.
Tenzin. Ellie.
Thank you.
Matt, do you want to?
Yeah. Just to turn, go back right there, and then turn around and turn this way. We got Chair Gores, and Lieutenant O'Side. Show the motion there as well.
Great.
Lieutenant O'Side, you can step forward to Andy just a little bit. There you go. One, two, three.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Don't drive too crazy to yell. All right. Now, I'll ask Chris Nordstrom, who works at our middle school and is our head cross-country coach, to come up and talk as well.
Thank you. Again, it's awesome that you guys have us every year. It's important for these, not only these great programs, but these individual athletes to be recognized. So, school board, we appreciate when our athletes are getting recognized. Another great season for cross-country. We had, I think, 79 kids registered in the fall. So, we're continuing to try to grow those numbers and build our program. Lot of success on and off of the course. Our kids continue to be super high achievers in the classroom, and we're continuing to get better on the course. Couple highlights. One is our girls' program, who was the defending champs last year at Greac, came back with, I think, 48 teams, and they finished second overall this year, which was, you know, outstanding. Conference meet, our girls finished runner-up. We were first last year runner-up this year, and our boys moved up to fourth overall. And then, at our section meet, we're continuing to battle. For those that don't know, Section 6AA, which is one of the toughest in the Midwest, if not the country, the Yzettes, Z'dinas, Tonkas, Eden Prairies, and all them. And we continue to battle with them. I believe our girls finished sixth, and our boys finished 10th. So, we're hoping to continue to improve there. A highlight, and I'll bring her up, Jersey Miller. Come on up, Jersey. Jersey had a fantastic season, so I'll do a little bit of individual on her. She finished 10th at the Roy Greac invitation. I believe there was just under 500 runners in that race. So, that was pretty awesome. And then, came back at our conference meet and was conference runner-up as an eighth grader. So, that was really special, and that really set her up kind of for the rest of her season. She finished 10th at the section meet and was the fourth individual qualifier to go to state. So, pretty exciting for an eighth grader to have that opportunity. She's the second park athlete in the last 15 years to qualify for state. So, it's awesome that we kind of have a little bit of a run going with three years in a row, sending athletes to the state meet. But the big, the big highlight was at the state meet. You know, she came in on paper, was somewhere in the 50s probably, time-wise, and went out after it and finished 18th overall to be, to be all-state. So, pretty special day, pretty awesome, and she's always smiling. So, she, it was highlighted by that. But she just had a fantastic season.
Good job, Jersey. Congratulations. You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And last, I'll have Whitney Moroto-Simon, our head volleyball coach, who also works here at the high school, come up and talk about volleyball.
I'm just going to make my girls come up right away, so I'm not lonely up here by myself. But I'll just quickly introduce everyone, and then I'll share a couple of highlights from our season. Ivy Jones, Faith Johnson, Hannah Howell, Elsa Bergland, Anna Bauer, Maya Betzer, Angie my two assistants, Devon and Emily. So, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the school board for having us. I get super excited because we just get to honor them one more night, and that's just, that makes me really happy. So, thank you so much for having us. We're super grateful to be here. But one thing that I've been sharing with a lot of people about St. Louis Park volleyball is that just five years ago, the varsity team only notched two wins in a single season. And so, to go from two wins to being 25 and eight this season in just a short five years, that's just, I think it's so cool, and it's just a great testament to how hard the girls have been working and what the program has done in a short amount of time. But overall, we finished sixth in the state, and this year was our first year in school history to go to the state tournament. Over the course of the season, we beat three top-10 ranked teams, which was pretty exciting. And then, what else did we do? Oh, we won the Hopkins Royal Tournament going 4-0, which was pretty excited, or exciting. We got the number-two seed in the section, and we ended up playing at Bloomington-Jefferson. They were the number-one seed on their home court, and we beat them in a really close match, back and forth, down to the wire. We started the fifth set. We only go to 15 points, and we started the first, the fifth set, 1 to 6. So, to come back in the fifth set, only going to 15 points, that was just, it was really exciting, really stressful, but we knew we could do it, and I'm really excited, or I was really proud of them for that, too. Let's see. Oh, we had an amazing showing at state. We filled up 10 fan buses, which was so exciting. On both Thursday and Friday, we lost our first match to Egan, who was undefeated the entire season, and they lost in the finals to Yzetta. But I was really proud of the way the girls came out at state, being such, you know, at the Excel Center, such a huge venue, playing, you know, arguably one of the best teams in the state. They competed really well. The second day, we played Morehead, who goes to state like every year, and we beat them in three pretty handily. So, that was really fun. And then, we lost the Constellation Championship to a really strong Lakeville North team. Also, I love to highlight that we have many two-to-three sport athletes on our team, where I was talking to a bunch of the coaches that were at the state tournament, and they said that they're trying to get their kids to get off the volleyball court and go play some other sports. So, I thought that was really fun to share, that a lot of our girls do multiple sports throughout the year. And then, lastly, we had an overall team GPA of 3.7. So, on the court, amazing, and in the classroom. That's all I got. Yeah. Thank you.
And Whitney was also recognized as the section coach of the year, so. Maya. Angie.
We'll stay up for a photo.
Yeah. Both of our Ivy.
Congratulations. You'll shake everybody.
All the way through the line.
Thank you.
We'll come to you here.
Olivia.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice of you to join us, Michaela. Addie.
I went all the way up the stairs.
Thank you.
Congrats, Addie.
Thank you.
Elsa. Congratulations.
Good excuse. That's a good excuse.
Macy.
Sam.
Kendall.
Congratulations. Annie.
Thank you.
Reagan.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Michaela.
Thank you.
Hannah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right.
It's going to be a tough one this way, but you're going to want to get up there and let.
Sure. You're not tall enough to be in the bath.
You've got those tims on. Trying to get some extra inches.
And quickly, I just want to thank the parents of the swimmers of Jersey with cross-country,
and then of the volleyball parents as well, for all your support for not only your daughters, but for all the rest of them and for Park Athletics. So, thank you. All right. Franny, you staying?
Thank you, everybody, and we assume that you're welcome to stay, but we understand if you leave. We'll take about a one-minute break here. All right, let's go back to the agenda here. So, we've called this order. I'm going to read the agenda, and then I'm going to seek a motion to approve the agenda. I'm going to make one, I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda that will delete the action item to approve the school calendars. Okay? So, this is, the agenda will be open forum, certificates of election for 2019 school board general election, the superintendent's report, and then we have several discussion items. First is the fiscal year 19 financial audit presentation, then preview of the fiscal year 21 levy certification, world's best workforce presentation, then review of 20, we will still review of the calendar options, 2021 and 2122. We will then do policy development first, reading 706, acceptance of donation and gifts, followed by the consent agenda. And then, our action agenda will be the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission appointment and acceptance of audit report. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as read? And then, followed by communications and transmittals and adjournment. Let me finish it. Now, is there a motion? Moved by Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye carries 6-0. Okay, so first, we have open forum, and I had my little smile as I looked out because I don't think there's anyone here to speak at open forum, but let me just ask the question. Anybody here to speak at open forum? No? Okay. Moving on, we will get to the certificates of election for 2019 school board general election. Is it a little bit different? Let me just hold on one second. So, we have on the, if you look on the agenda, we have the agenda, which includes certificates of election for 2019 school board general election. And then, following this, there is a motion and a second on that piece. Okay? Is everybody on the board? So, let me just read the resolution. So, it's pursuant to do call and notice thereof, a regular business meeting of the school board of Independent School District Number 283, St. Louis Park, State of Minnesota, was held in said school district on the 25th day of November 2019 at 7:00 PM. All members were present with the exception of Mr. Bennecke. The resolution is as follows. Whereas the school board has canvassed the general election for school board members held on December, on November 5, 2019, now therefore be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District Number 283, State of Minnesota, as follows. The chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute certificates of election on behalf of the school board of Independent School District Number 283 to the following candidates: Heather Wilsie, Lauren McLendon, C. Colin Cox, Ken Morrison, who have received a sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fill vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on the first Monday in January next following the election, based on the results of the canvass. Their certificate of election shall be in substantially the form attached here, too. After the time for contesting, the election has passed, and the candidate has filed all campaign financial reports required by Minnesota statutes, Chapter 211A. The clerk of the school board is hereby directed to deliver a certificate to each person entitled thereto personally or by certified mail. The clerk is hereby directed to enclose with the certificate a form of acceptance of office and oath of office in substantially the form attached here, too. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Moved by Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. All right. So, next up on the, and that's exciting news. We're sort of a little blase about it because we did this, let the last motion. But let me just pause to say, we're really thrilled to be welcoming the four members who won the election, and look forward to having them join, join us. It's going to be an outstanding board, and it's going to be a great next few years. So, well done, everybody. So, next up, we have the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Chair Gores, members of the board. This evening for my superintendent's report, I would like to highlight three items that are connected to Strategy 3 of our strategic plan, which is community collaboration. And in that strategy, we strive to collaborate with our diverse communities authentically and systemically to build collective ownership and accountability to achieve our mission and mission outcomes in accordance with our core values. And the first, I think that I would like to highlight is the gift of music, and really just the partnership with the St. Louis Park Friends of the Arts over the years. Since the late, oh, since the late '90s, the St. Louis Park Community Band and Friends of the Arts have given almost 800 band and orchestra instruments to music students in elementary, middle, and high school. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank both the St. Louis Park Community Band and Friends of the Arts for this tremendous collaboration and partnership to help our students achieve our district mission. The other organization that I wanted to take an opportunity to highlight and thank is our community partner, STEP. And I just wanted to remind everyone of the upcoming opportunity on Wednesday, December 11, to participate in the, now is almost becoming an annual holiday train stop at STEP. And the event, and that, the train will be stopping at West Lake Street and Library Lane in the historic Walker Lake District, which is the neighborhood in which our high school currently resides. And as you're aware, this, this event is really about building awareness around food and security. And the great thing about STEP is that they support many of our students and families here in the St. Louis Park Public School District. And the last concept that I would like to highlight as it relates to community collaboration is just to take an opportunity to thank all of the community members who not only have participated in the Out of School Task Force, but who have also provided feedback to the school district about academic enrichment and intervention opportunities that we can provide our students as we transition to an earlier start time for elementary school students next school year. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Aston. Next up, we have the financial audit presentation for financial year, fiscal year 2019. This will be led by Patricia Magnuson, Director of Business Services, and Jim Icton, MMKR auditor.
Good evening, Chair Gores, Superintendent O'Sai, members of the board. Tonight, you received the audit reports of physical copy of the audit report at an earlier meeting, and they're, they're also attached in the board documents, and will be on the website after they're approved this evening. This was our first year with a new audit firm, Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, and Radesevich, MMKR. And Jim Icton, the managing partner with MMKR, will take you through the audit results. We had a rigorous audit that was completed, and we're very thankful for the findings and recommendations and ways that we can improve our work on behalf of this board and on behalf of the community. And we welcome your collaboration and input on that, board. I also want you to know and remind you from last board meeting that the financial results for the general fund were positive. We're ending the year with an 18.3% unassigned, unreserved fund balance, which exceeds Board Policy 545, which is a minimum of 6%, and that we're working in collaboration with the Finance Advisory Committee on recommendations around that fund balance policy and other items. So, at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jim Icton.
Thanks, Patricia, members of the board, or Chair Administration. My name is Jim Icton. I'm with MMKR CPAs. I'm here this evening to provide a brief presentation of the audit results for the year. It is a bit of importance, I guess, at this point, to let anybody that's listening, make them aware that we did actually have an opportunity before this presentation in the work session that preceded the meeting to go over these results in much greater detail than you're going to hear this evening. But I'm just going to touch on the highlights of that discussion, as well as the highlights of the audit for this year. First and foremost, it is a requirement in state law that the school district have an annual financial statement prepared. That financial statement is required to be audited by an independent certified public accountant, which is my role with the district. That particular role includes completing an audit, which includes the audit of the financial statements that I mentioned, as well as the audit of the student activity accounts of the district. We also are then required to audit your internal controls over both the district audit, as well as the student activity audit. We're required to complete what's called a single audit of federal awards, which is guided by a federal guidance and their standards. We're also then required to audit your compliance with state laws and regulations, which are guided by the Office of the State Auditor here in the State of Minnesota, as well as your compliance with the manual for activity fund accounting. In, as part of the completion of this audit, we issue also what's called the management report. And in that management report, you'll find discussion of the audit results, as well as really a document that summarizes the audit in a way, in a forum, that you could read that and really get a feel for how things went. My role this evening is to provide some of the results and provide some context visually, as well as in communication. So, first and foremost, I did issue, as part of the audit process, a clean opinion on those basic financial statements that I mentioned. Technically, that particular opinion is defined as an unmodified opinion for those CPAs in the world, but it was the opinion you were looking for, and it is a clean opinion for this year. We were also able to issue a clean opinion on the student activity account financial statements that are also prepared by the district, and that's also defined as an unmodified opinion on those accounts. And when it comes to internal controls and the compliance reports that we issued, we did have one finding to report, in particular, related to a number of journal entries that were prepared or found as part of this audit. Anytime you have an audit process where the auditor finds journal entries that, that are significant in nature, it is required to report as part of the audit process a finding related specifically to the controls. The district's internal controls should be sufficient enough to identify any journal entries as part of the audit process. We did include in those particular journal entries a number of prior period adjustments, adjustments to the beginning balance in a number of areas as well. As I go through these findings, I think it's important to understand to the listeners, as well as to the board, that a finding is really a result of the audit. We're here to assist the district more than we are to be punitive. So, as from a board perspective, as, as well as any governmental agency that has these audits, the corrective action plan that comes along with these findings is probably more important or as important as the finding. The district administration has prepared and included as part of these documents the corrective action plan, the plan that is in place or that will be in place to eliminate the findings, so that does not recur, reoccur ongoing. And certainly, I fully anticipate, as far as some of the guidance that I provided, that these findings- Technically, that particular opinion is defined as an unmodified opinion for those CPAs in the world. But it was the opinion you were looking for, and it is a clean opinion for this year. We were also able to issue a clean opinion on the student activity account financial statements that are also prepared by the district, and that's also defined as an unmodified opinion on those accounts. And when it comes to internal controls and the compliance reports that we issued, we did have one finding to report, in particular related to a number of journal entries that were prepared or found as part of this audit. Anytime you have an audit process where the auditor finds journal entries that are significant in nature, it is required to report as part of the audit process a finding related specifically to the controls. The district's internal controls should be sufficient enough to identify any journal entries as part of the audit process. We did include in those particular journal entries, a number of prior period adjustments, adjustments to the beginning balance in a number of areas as well. As I go through these findings, I think it's important to understand to the listeners, as well as to the board, that a finding is really a result of the audit. We're here to assist the district more than we are to be punitive. So as from a board perspective, as well as any governmental agency that has these audits, the corrective action plan that comes along with these findings is probably more important or as important as the finding. The district administration has prepared and included as part of these documents the corrective action plan, the plan that is in place or that will be in place to eliminate the findings so that does not recur, reoccur ongoing. And certainly, I fully anticipate, as far as some of the guidance that I provided, that these findings will be eliminated for next year. Continuing on the audit results, we did find no findings to report in the single audit of federal awards, which is an exceptional result. We did find two findings in the area of Minnesota legal compliance. The district is required to pay its bills within 35 days of receipt of the bill or receipt of the service, whatever comes later. During our testing, we noted a number of payments that exceeded that 35-day threshold. Again, a corrective action plan is being put in place to eliminate that finding and to comply moving forward. The last finding in this area relates to the district's requirement that you are required to receive a contractor's withholding affidavit for any contracts that you have with contractors before sending them final payment for their bill. That particular affidavit was not on file for two of the vendors that we tested this particular year. Again, that particular area of the district has put a contract, a corrective action plan in place to assure that future contractors withholding affidavits are received prior to final payment. We also, as part of our audit, mentioned the student activity audit. The student activity audit, albeit a much less significant portion of the financial activities of the district, it is important that you comply with these particular activities. We had a number of findings in those particular student activity audit, much of which related to record-keeping and the record-keeping over receipts and accounts in terms of their activity, as well as the timeliness of deposits and some forms that are required. It is important to understand the student activity audit. This is really the last year that the state of Minnesota, as well as the national governmental accounting standards, requires this to be reported separately. The corrective action action in this place is really somewhat simple in that they're required to change and process these track actions as part of the business office starting July 1st. So many of these findings, we anticipate going away, specifically because the process of the accounting is changing in the next fiscal year. So look forward to that particular corrective action as well. We also provided some other comments and recommendations regarding approval of claims, as well as some accounting for accrued vacation. As I mentioned, we did talk about those at the school board presentation earlier this evening. One of the items that I do want to point out as part of this presentation is this particularly important concept behind an audit, and that is the follow-up of prior-year audit findings. It is an important aspect of an audit, specifically to me, in that we don't see reoccurring findings. We will find findings in audit, and that's just the way an audit works. But we hope not to find reoccurring findings. And we, as part of this audit, followed up on the previous auditor's findings and did some testing in that area, as well as some additional testing, which was required as part of that process, and did not have a finding to report. So those individuals that work in the federal program area, specifically to the termination of free and reduced-priced meals, as well as claim for reimbursements, should be commended for their efforts in eliminating the finding this particular year. So an audit has two particular sides to an audit, the first one being the compliance side, the second one being the financial side. In my management report, we cover a number of graphical presentations that show some of those financial results. One of the concepts in our report shows the funding of public education in the state of Minnesota over the last decade. If you look at this particular presentation, you see, they see that funding towards the general education aid has been 2% going through 2019, which is about five years now, and 2% moving forward. That is much better than it has been from, if you go back a decade or so. But that being said, it is only 2%. Inflation has been increasing at higher levels than that, and the funding of public education in the state of Minnesota continues to be a challenge, even with additional funding that has been given to school districts. My report also talks about the trend lines when it relates to fund balance. An important aspect of financing of a school district is your fund balance, your equity position at the end of the year. Most school districts in the state of Minnesota, on average, have about 20% fund balance. The school district in St. Louis Park has very similar amounts in terms of fund balance, as you can see in this graph, as well as a slight decline over the last several years in fund balances, which has also been seen statewide. We also provided some information in the meeting regarding governmental funds trends in terms of revenues on a per-student basis. The district does receive higher-than-average revenues on a per-student basis, most of that in the area of the property tax levy, as well as overall state revenues. You also see that your community service program is a vibrant program, receiving revenues of almost $600, $700 more than a comparable school district in the metropolitan area. My report also shows expenditures on a per-student basis. You'll find in a typical school district that expenditures will be higher than average when revenues are higher than average, and that in your district is no different. Some of the other highlights of this particular graph do show that the district is spending higher-than-average amounts in the regular instruction categorical areas, which means that these dollars are getting to the classroom to help with the regular instruction programming. This particular graph does highlight a few things as well, in that is also in the area of debt service. At the end of 2017, I believe the district passed a referendum for billing improvements, which you can see on this particular graph is starting to kick in during this particular fiscal year. We also, in our report, get into individual fund financial positions. You can see at this particular presentation, this particular graph, that the equity position, as well as the cash position, has been very stable over the last several years. As Patricia mentioned, leading into this presentation, the fund balance in 2018 did increase slightly in 2019. I think the district went into the -- well, I know the district went into the year with a budgeted spendout of about $800 in fund balance and ended the year with an increase of about $1.3 million. Those numbers being stated, the actual results did mimic the overall budget that was adopted by the district. I think it's important to understand that as part of the overall audit results, that we give some sort of context in terms of the overall budgeted results. And certainly, this particular audit budget results were close to what was budgeted and certainly ended the year in a planful manner. My audit report also provides some information on fund balances. As I previously mentioned, this particular graph does show some fund balances based on certain criteria. The district does have its own criteria that Patricia mentioned that requires a minimum fund balance of 6% of operations. As she mentioned, it was, it ended the year at 18.3%, which does show adequate fund balance at the end of the year. The other items I wanted to mention as it relates to the financial results is some of the graphical presentations related to revenues and expenditures. One of the reasons I bring this up is this particular item. An audit is a reflection of the audit results for a year ended that happened at this point six months ago. So as a school board member, if you, if the audit results did not mimic what was adopted in the budget, that can be a concern. And me, as an auditor, I look for being able to assert to a school board member that, yeah, the results that you're receiving actually held true. And what that means to you is you can actually use the data you're receiving to make informed decisions, because you know that ultimately, the audit is going to hold true. In 2018, the revenues of the district were slightly over budget by about, well, it was about $2 million on a very, on a significant operation. Most of that in the, in many of the other categorical areas. The district received a number of other revenues that were generally one-time and really difficult to budget for. On the expenditure side, you'll see that the district expenditures were within 0.2% of budget. You exceeded budget by $123,000. Given that this is about a $60 million general fund, to end the year with expenditures within 0.2%, $123,000 is exceptional. That is a commendable job on the part of all those members of this organization to both project for what the expenditures were and really hold true to those projections. So the district should be commended for its overall budgeting practices. The district also has other governmental funds. You have a food service fund, as well as a community service fund, both showing improvements in fund balance and both showing adequate fund balances for their size operation going forward. So in summary, I was able to issue a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, on the basic financial statements. We did report three findings this particular year, two in, one in internal control, as well as one, two in legal compliance. I reported student activity findings this particular year. I referenced that financial results were reflected in adherence to what the budget had projected, as well as, I will say, at this point, the district's financial position is in solid financial picture and certainly something that the district is doing an exceptional job of holding the fund balances at the right levels. So with that, I'll open up to any questions that you might have for me.
You know, we met with Jim for about an hour before the meeting and got all of our clarifying questions taken care of, so I think that explains why nobody's kind of jumping to speak up here. I will simply note that we are grateful that you did a very rigorous audit and that you returned what you've described as an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best you can get.
Yes.
And we're in good financial health.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann?
Just wanted to add that we did change audit firms this year, so this is our first year with MMKR. And I think the presentation that we heard before this was excellent, and this has just been a really useful and very well-presented audit in terms of both the parts about our practices that we're really overseeing and the parts about our financial condition, which we're also overseeing. So this has been a very, very useful process for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your time.
Have a great.
Thank you, Patricia. Special thanks to you and your team, Ann Brooks. Next up, we have preview of the fiscal year '21 levy certification.
Good evening again, Chair Goris, Superintendent Osai, and board members. The purpose of this presentation tonight, it might be a little odd to be presenting on the tax levy before the truth and taxation hearing, but it's to have a preview for the school board to prepare you to certify that final levy on December 9th, after we have our truth and taxation hearing at 6:30 PM on December 9th in this room. First of all, I'm just going to give you a quick overview of the final levy payable in 2020. It's total of $32,987,460, and it's an increase of about 1.59% over the taxes payable in 2019. And I just briefly want to show the board that what was approved in the preliminary levy was just a little bit higher. So the final levy is going to be lower than we had anticipated in September by about $182,000. That's the amount that's reflected in the truth and taxation statements that have been coming to people's homes. You've probably all received yours already. There's a footnote there about why the levy was reduced. We have our brand-new OPEB levy for other post-employment benefits, and we are about 50% funded in that levy, so we were only able to levy for half of the cost, for 50% of the cost, and that adjustment was reflected by the Department of Education. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time in the details. I'll go through all of the line items at the truth and taxation hearing. Nothing has changed, except the OPEB levy line, from what we discussed in September. But I did highlight the building leases line, because I want to just remind the board that included in the final payable 2020 levy is the idea of adding a turf field through a lease levy mechanism at the high school on its practice field. So just to remind the board that that's still included. And I want to give you a little more context about some things that will happen as we move forward with that project. And just a reminder that the stadium field is already a turf field, and then the interior of our track is a grass field. And that's the field we're talking about, where that little red X is. It's that field in the interior of the track, where there's another picture of it. And here's how this works. The project, we anticipate, to cost somewhere around $2,250,000. That includes all the groundwork and besides just the turf itself. And we would fund it through a lease purchase, which would run through the capital fund and the general fund. And the way we would make payments against that is through the lease levy, which is a tax levy that would cost our homeowner with an average, with about our average-value home is $250,000. And the impact of this project would be $10 a year. It's already reflected in, the cost is already reflected in the truth and taxation statements that went out. That does not mean that we presume the project will be completed. What that means is we've put the funding in place, and we would simply reverse the tax levy in future years if the board decides against the project. But in order to complete the project next summer, we had to put steps in place. This is the timeline, and I just highlighted a few things. In December, we're going to be submitting documents for the City Planning Commission meeting, and we'll need to schedule a public meeting for a project such as this. And then we will continue to include the funding in our final payable 2020 tax levy that we'll discuss in our truth and taxation hearing on December 9th at 6:30 PM in this room. And in January, then, there'll be a public meeting that's held. Again, it doesn't presume the project will be completed. It's part of the due diligence that we have to go through with the City Planning Commission to take feedback from the community. And then the city council reviews our conditional use permit for the project. And then, at that time, the school board can make a decision whether you want to seek funding for the project. We've gone through some of the due diligence. Then we'll go out and take bids for funding for the project for the lease purchase, using Ellers and Associates for that work. And then bids will be received on the project itself in April 2020. And that's another time that the board can weigh in and take a look at what the bids, the level that the bids came in at, and either decide to continue with the project or not. So there's lots of places that the board will be weighing in on this project over time. If we continue with the project, as we are planning, the turf will be completed, along with the track project in November. That's one of the reasons we wanted to put the turf forward at this point. We talked a little bit about that. We had our athletic director here and others at one of our previous meetings talking about the need for the turf. But we wanted to try to get some synergies in costs and some efficiencies in cost by combining it with the track project that's being completed next summer as part of our deferred maintenance. So this is just a quick overview, again, of the tax levy. I'm not sure why some of these slides aren't showing up. Okay. Here's a quick overview of our tax levy. Again, just reminding the board, back to the big picture, that it's about a $32 million, almost $33 million tax levy declining from what we had talked about in September. However, that decline was included by September 30th in the truth and taxation statements, so that's all reflected. And then to remind the board what's happening, really, with our overall tax impact for our community. So our, a tax rate is a math problem. There's a numerator and a denominator. So the numerator is the total levy, 1.59%. The denominator, so our total levy, is going up by 1.59%. It's divided by all of the property values in the school district of St. Louis Park. And those property values are going up by eight or nine percent overall. So what happens is we have a declining tax rate. And this very complicated chart, I just want to show you at the bottom. All of the math is included in here, but if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, there's two types of tax rates. There's a market value rate that's declining by 0.018%, and a tax capacity rate that's declining by 1.002%. So in theory, some homeowners could actually see a decline in their tax levy this year. And I actually looked at some real tax statements from some folks that live in St. Louis Park. And so I have some examples here, and we'll go through these in more detail at truth and taxation time. But if there was an average-value home of $250,000 and had no change in its property value, that home's tax bill will be going down by $67 for taxes payable in 2020 with the levy that was put forward in the preliminary levy. And then here's three examples of homes that I looked at. And then here's three examples of homes that I, that I looked at. A home that's $220,000, which represents a 6.63 increase from last year, that home's property taxes are going up by $6 per year. The next one's a home value going up by 6.7%, property taxes going up by $7. This last one was a homeowner that had made some improvements, some substantial improvements, so an 18% increase in value and tax impact of $133 for the year. So, you can see almost equivalent property values and a much different experience in the change in the tax bill based on what's happening with the home's valuation. So, that's a summary of what you'll be seeing in more detail that we'll present to our community in the truth and taxation hearing to prepare you for what we expect on December 9th, because it has to be done by December 31st, to approve the tax levy, the final tax levy.
And that, that is anticipated beyond our action agenda, December 9th as well, correct?
That's right. There's a 6:30 PM hearing and then the board takes action during the 7 PM regular board meeting.
Questions or comments? We'll start with Ann and then we'll go to Joe.
I just wanted to say 6:30 PM, December 9th, Monday night, in this room, C350 in the high school. Is the truth and taxation hearing. I just wanted to repeat that again. 6:30 PM on December 9th, in this room, C350 at the high school for anyone who wants to be heard or wants to hear more about our levy.
Thanks for the presentation. It was very clear. So, I will just state that you will have to make this very clear presentation, again, a couple times as you'll have three new board members, and especially when it comes to the turf field, making sure that they're up to speed on what, the need for it and maybe having Andy explain to them where that's coming from, because that's something that the community has always been very interested in, from both, both sides of the spectrum there, but I think just, just a reminder that you'll, you'll want to get them up to speed coming in.
Thank you.
Come January, and it's nice that you have a couple different gates there for us to, for this board going forward to weigh in on those things.
Ken?
And I had a question about the, the track and the field. You said summer that'll be available or be started?
Yes, we want to start the project right after school gets out in the summer, yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, it will be completed in November if we stay on the timeline where, that we presented.
Okay, so then it would be both track? No, it would just be the football season would be a different place for the non-varsity games?
That's right, yeah.
Well, it would be any of the summer and fall sports. It might be more than football that uses the practice field, just to be clear, it's not all football, Ken. And our community users, couldn't resist, sorry. It was all me. Yeah, and I just want to, we heard a presentation a while back and we've had, you know, an article in the Sun-Sailor about it, I'm just going to do a quick summary with respect to that, the turf. The reason for the timing of including it in this levy is that because we do have to do the track around it, and so it's more economically efficient if we're going to do it, to do it at the same time, right?
That's exactly, yes.
And then, other reasons that we heard for doing it was there'd be much more use that would be available, there's a safety, it'll be, it's anticipated to be a safer field with the turf than the use on the grass field. We've lost some area for practice with adding the fitness center as part of our referendum. And the numbers that you, the anticipated cost impact to the taxpayer is $10 a year if your house is valued at $250,000 a year, and at $10 a year, that's about, that's less than 20 cents a week, it's about 19 cents a week, just to kind of do a quick summary of, of what we heard before. Patricia, thank you so much. Look forward to seeing you on December 9th.
Thank you.
To go through this one more time. Next up, we have the world's best workforce presentation, Sylvia Lafayette, Director of Assessment, Research and Evaluation, Patrick Duffy, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Assistant Ossai, Superintendent.
Good evening, Chair Gore, members of the board. This evening, we would like to share some, an overview of our world's best workforce and achievement and integration plan here in the district. And before we jump into information or data connected to world's best workforce, I, I wanted to start off by just stating the things that we believe here in St. Louis Park, and I believe that we have very clear goals, we have a plan to get there, and I'll talk about that in a little bit here shortly, and I also believe that we have evidence that the work we're doing is making a difference, and with that being said, there are still gaps that persist, that are predictable in St. Louis Park by race. You know, as I talk about that we, you know, this plan that I described of us, you know, having some direction in getting to where we need to be, our strategic plan is foundational, and as you all are fully aware, our strategic plan, which will be revisited here in, in the spring, has really gave, given us a pathway around four strategies, and that first pathway being teaching and learning, and you'll hear a little bit more about that this evening as Patrick talks about some of the work that we're doing from a professional development I think it was now three years ago, the state combined both the world's best workforce and the achievement and integration plan, and as you're aware, the world's best workforce plan is really focused on five areas, one of those being kindergarten readiness, students being proficient or able to read by third grade, making sure that we're graduating all students from high school, that we're preparing students for college and career, and that we're working to close achievement gaps in all state mandated areas. And the dollars that we receive from the state, I mean, we receive approximately $850,000 through achievement and integration funds. Of that money, at least 80% of those dollars must be used for direct student services. Up to 20% of those dollars can be used for professional development, and then there's another category called direct administrative support in which up to or no more than 10% can be used for that. And we've, what we're, what we've done here in St. Louis Park is really tried to utilize those funds in a way that reflect the different areas of the world's best workforce goals. We measured our progress in three different areas, one of those areas being proficiency, and you'll hear a little bit more about that tonight as Sylvie comes up and shares information connected to each of the goals and the progress we're making. We also measure this in the area of growth and gap closing. And before I invite Sylvie up, know that the data that you're, you'll see tonight and that we'll be sharing is not exhaustive of all of the data that we've collected here in St. Louis Park to, to measure the progress that we're making, but we believe that these, these data points give you a high-level overview of the progress in each of the goal areas. So, at this time, I'll invite up Sylvie, who will take us a little bit deeper into each goal area and the data in those areas.
All right, thank you Superintendent Ossai. Good evening, Chair Gore, and member of the board, members of the board. As Superintendent Ossai said, we look at certain data points in order to evaluate our progress on the world's best workforce plan. Again, a lot of our data points come from standardized assessments, but again, there's a lot of context that goes into that as well. All right, so our first goal was ready for kindergarten, and we measure that here in St. Louis Park by trying to increase the number of students who are deemed low-risk based on our early reading fast bridge assessments, which stands for Formative Assessment System for Teachers. And so, in St. Louis Park, we have two types of early reading assessments. We have one in English, which three of our elementary schools, Aquila, Peter Hobart, and Susan Lindgren, they take that, and then at Park Spanish Immersion, they, our kindergarten students also take the early reading Spanish instead of the early reading English. And so, our goal was to increase the students in kindergarten by 2% in the low-risk category, and actually, we met that goal and we exceeded it. So, in three of our elementary schools, we, we have nine percentage increase in the low-risk category, and then at Park Spanish Immersion, we had 25% of our kindergarteners increased from the, in the low-risk area. All right, so, when we disaggregate this by race for our early reading assessment in English, because most of our kindergarten students take this particular assessment, you can see the trends there, and the majority of our kindergarteners, you can see that we have an increase in the low-risk category, and we also have some work to do with some of our racial categories, particularly in our Latinx kindergarten community and our two or more races. All right, and here are some trends over time to take a look at growth as well to assess for our kindergarten readiness. And what sticks out in this particular dataset is that our, we see growth in our North American Indian group as well as our Black or African-American student group, and we see some decline as well. But overall, based on last year, we met this goal. Our second goal was to have students reading by their third-grade reading level as assessed by our MCA and MTAS score. And as you can see, our goal was to increase our MCA scores by 2%. What you also see highlighted here is how we did in comparison to the state. So, although we are still performing above the state, we didn't meet this particular goal. And when we disaggregate this by race and we look at it for 2018 and 2019, you can see this trend as well. For our American, for our North American Indian or Alaskan Native group as well as our Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander group, those, those cells were too small, the student counts were too little for the state to report, and so for data privacy, they didn't report those scores. For our third world's best workforce goal, we wanted to increase our graduation rate by 1%, and we actually, we met that goal and we actually increased by 2.1%. And again, for the last two years, we've been performing above the state. And our four-year graduation rates, when we disaggregated by rates, by race, you can see these trends as well. And what you see from 2017 to 2018 is that all, all racial groups have increased their graduation rates except for our Black or African-American students. And the statewide goal, as you know, for 2020 is that 90% of students graduate within four years with no student groups below 85%, and we've met that. And then our fourth goal was to increase the percentage of 11th grade students with a composite score of 24 or higher on ACT plus writing by 2%, and we didn't meet this goal. We actually had a decrease of 8.3%. And what often gets reported publicly is the cohort score of graduates' ACT scores, and so for this year, our 2019 graduates for, sorry, for last year, our 2019 graduates had a composite score of 21.8, so that includes graduates who might have taken the ACT a couple times, not just once, and we performed above the state. The state composite score was 21.4. And when we disaggregated by subjects, you can see these trends as well. For English, we performed above the state, for reading and science, we also performed above the state, for math, we're somewhat slightly below the state. Right, right, so it's a really small percentage, it's not even a full. Right.
Okay, sorry about that. So, Sylvie, the math one, when you're just talking the wrong numbers, that's a wash. It's, it's really not significant.
Right, right, it's really small, so it's on there. All right, and so, our percentage of students enrolled in any institution of higher education within 16 months, when we disaggregate this by race, you'll notice that St. Louis Park, most of our students enroll in an institute of higher education soon after graduation, and that is also above the state. Okay, and so for our fifth goal, closing the achievement gap, we partially met this goal. So, for our reading achievement gap, our goal was to, it's a multi-year goal, and it was to decrease the gap to 34% by June 2020. And so, we slightly increased this gap by, as you can see, three tenths of a percentage point.
Well, to Karen's point, is this statistically significant or not? The difference is so small there, isn't it?
Right, and as, actually, it is small, and as you can see, the state also went down, but just to show. And then also for closing the achievement gap for math, we actually increased, I'm sorry, we closed, we slightly decreased the gap, so you'll see that there. Okay. And that's the update on the five goals. Yeah.
So, Sylvie, when we look at the third grade scores, the thing that I think people need to really understand, we're not actually comparing the same cohort of kids, it's a whole new, different group of kids.
Right.
And it changes every year, so I, I've never understood why the state thinks this is an effective membership, measurement to compare different cohorts of kids. It, it just really doesn't make any sense. What, what I like, what we do with some of our other data at the data retreat is look at the growth of cohorts going forward, the kindergartners to first graders, the third graders to fifth graders, as they age in place and stay with us. We are seeing growth in certain areas when we look at the same cohort of kids.
Right, yep, and, and I think Superintendent Ossai mentioned this as well, these are, these are some data points, right, to help us assess and evaluate how we're doing on our world's best workforce plan. There's other, there's other data that we haven't included in this presentation as parents have asked for in terms of qualitative data. When we look at our student engagement surveys on how students are enjoying their experience in classrooms, what we tend to see are positive experiences that students are expressing, and that often doesn't get put into the standardized assessments as well, so.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yep. Yeah.
I, I was looking at the graduation rates on the four-year, and I, I first initially looked at the Black and African-Americans, where we dropped from 93.1 to 86 on the graduation, 86.8. But then you look down at the two or more races and in 2017, there was a zero or blank. So, that's why I think is the mix of the 93%?
It could be, so all we know from the Minnesota report card is that that student count is too small, so in order to, however students identified, and all we know is that there was less than 10 within the two or more races category, but they, you know, to your point, that could explain for it.
Okay, we'll hold off on questions because I see Patrick's waiting to come up, so we'll see what he talks about before we finish up.
I'll just add a little bit, so, you know, I was reminded as I looked at this plan and just in every conversation we have about, one of the reasons I wanted to come to St. Louis Park, the reputation that it has among the academic community at our universities and in other school districts is that our district and our adults are committed to learning across the board at every level of the organization, and one of the things that we have prioritized as we really look to strengthen the school system is to make sure that we're not asking our students to do anything that we're not willing to do ourselves. So, our belief is that our adults need to be as much learners and modeling learning as we want our students to do. So, our professional development plan is very robust and is, is an essential part of our world's best workforce plan, and I would say that the key components of this have been working through our strategic plan and our mission to develop culturally relevant practices. These include the three tenets that have been put together by Gloria Ladsen-Billings and replicated by many scholars around academic success, cultural competence and critical consciousness. And then with that, we've also focused very heavily on helping teachers look at their collaboration practices differently. Many of us grew up in systems where teachers often closed their doors and their work was done really with the students individually within their classrooms, and we are trying to make, break down any barriers we have to that to make sure that... to make sure that we not only have a collegial school district, but actually a purposefully collaborative school district. And we've engaged in training of cohorts of teachers and our principals around collaborative action research for equity, which includes planning and strategizing what a lesson might look like with culturally relevant pedagogy, to then act and teach on that lesson and observe each other and provide feedback, to reflect personally as well as collaboratively around how effective it was, and then also to gather student voice and student perspectives on the lesson, and then look to transform their work. So for example, we talk about culturally relevant pedagogy a lot, but there are many examples of teachers all across the system working together during our professional development time to try to establish lessons that have all of these aspects to it. And I could go through lessons from everywhere, from early childhood through 12th grade, that lay this out. One that I could just share is in ninth-grade geometry. So for instance, our math department has looked at taking a geometry lesson that may not have been seen as relevant to a lot of students and tie it in to something that may bring also an interdisciplinary emphasis to it that helps really realize our goals and our ideas around international baccalaureate as well, bringing a depth of understanding. So one of the lessons they developed was the geometry of gerrymandering. And in this, I'll just read what they put in their repository. They said that students should determine what it could mean for a district to be compact and continuous. And then students would analyze how gerrymandering could affect different social groups negatively during elections. So in a lesson like this, they're not just learning geometry, but they're learning about the effects of it, developing socio-political and critical consciousness around what gerrymandering might mean, what would be the positive or negative effects. And then through cultural competence, understanding what that mean for historically marginalized groups or neighborhoods or communities compared to those that may have more relative privilege. So those are the sort of really things, things that I see happening around the school district where teachers are really looking to deepen the, the engagement of students in all of their classrooms, regardless of what content area that is. And then the last piece I just want to point out is around feedback. And we've been working closely with our principals, with our leaders, our teacher leaders, our coaches, and our teachers all the way through, to look at the importance of feedback. And there's lots of research that we can point to about the impact that feedback has on organizations. It can be both positive and it can be negative. So what we are trying to discern and what we'll be looking at through a number of reviews over the next two to three years is really eking out what sort of feedback is going to be most effective to bring about student learning and growth. And we realize how important that is. Aligning our assessments, not just our curriculum instruction, but our assessments and our feedback in culturally relevant ways is going to be absolutely essential for us to get to the next level. So that includes student-to-teacher feedback. We know how important student voice is, but rather than just listening to voice, how are we taking the feedback of students and gathering it, both formally and informally, on a regular and consistent basis, to change our practices as teachers? We know that that's one of the most effective pieces. We often think of feedback being about teacher to student, but it has to be reciprocal. We talk about relationships being key in education. If it's a one-way feedback without gathering feedback as well from our students and then having timely feedback that is effective for, for students from teachers as well, then it becomes something that really isn't a relationship. It's just, you know, it, it's not there. And then the last piece that I'll say, oh, something just went out. But the last one is peer-to-peer feedback. And that would be really developing practices where both our students and our adults are providing feedback to each other. So for instance, using practices that help students instead of working maybe traditionally in rows and working on individual work, they're actually providing feedback on each other's work, not teaching each other, but learning how to give effective feedback, understand through rubrics, understand what the standards are, and be able to provide both positive and negative feedback to their peers. But also providing enough vulnerability within the system for our adults to gather and seek out feedback from their peers, to really look at how they're going to learn and grow, and, and inviting folks into classrooms. We know that our racial equity instructional coaching model provides an opportunity for teachers to get into classrooms and provide feedback to our staff. And what we're doing now is trying to make sure that our collaborative teams also have that time to discuss with each other about how their job-alike work can improve. So that's, those are my thoughts for now.
I'll just say thank you to both of you. You know, there's, there's some pieces in the report that, that show us where we have more work to do. And so I assume there's some analysis going on. We know Sylvia gave us the results, but I assume that there's work going on as to why are those results and what can we do differently to improve those results in some of those areas. But I was particularly pleased with the ACT scores because they really are the threshold for students that are going to go on to, to a higher-level education once they leave us. You need to get some ACT scores to get admitted and get in. And Minnesota tends to score top in the nation. And our scores, for the most part, were higher than state scores. So I think that's something that shows we're doing a lot right here, as well as with our graduation scores. Just want us to do, figure out what we need to do to, even if we aren't comparing cohorts, to just help our kids know how to read by third grade because that sets the, that really prepares them for their future enjoyment, I think, of their time with SLP because they're not frustrated in the class. So really good work and, and more continuous improvement to go. Go ahead, Ann.
I was really excited to hear the focus on professional development because that's where, I mean, like the, the kids are, what did I say once? Like the kids are the why, but the staff is the how, right? And so that is how we make the, make the system changes. And so I was curious if you could talk a little bit about what has changed in professional development? We're going to see the calendar in just a minute. And I think, thinking about we've moved professional development to different times of the year than it traditionally was, or how has that kind of structurally changed or to help you support, support teachers better?
So I'll, I'll just start by saying, you know, we have very limited professional development time relative to even some other school districts in the Twin Cities. We have four professional development days embedded into our school calendar. And we try to get as much out of every minute of that as we can, bringing staff together with messages and information and opportunities that will be relevant to a wide swath of staff. And then providing them both autonomous as well as facilitated collaboration time to look at their lessons, to look at the state standards, and then to really evaluate their practices with a racially conscious lens. So I'd say that's how our professional development looks now. And I'd say the, the other piece to it is I think we've, we've tried to really have an emphasis on looking at how we collaborate most effectively, knowing that we are going to be stronger together than a group of individuals, just like we'd be stronger as a school system than as a system of schools. We feel like we would be stronger as collaborative teams than we would as a group of individuals trying to get this work done.
And one thing related to professional development that a conscious decision was made to make it easier on working families. We used to have a whole bunch of half-days. And it was either a late-start morning or an early release. And that was really a burden on our, our working families with childcare issues. And so to tighten it up to be a full day of professional development as much as we can, that's, that's actually better for our staff, but it's also better for our working families because trying to figure out the late start especially was hard on families. And I can't remember how many years ago we made that change, but we're getting better and better at being effective with the time that we are budgeting. So I applaud that change because that was a burden for a lot of people for a number of years.
And I'll just add to that, the other thing that Patrick, you, you probably know what has been done is we've done some good work in the summers with professional development. And we've had some internal summer programs, but we've also helped folks consolidate efforts in, at Benild, as I recall last year. So there are lots of ways to come at this. And I, and I think we're, you guys are continuing to work at it. How do we help our teachers improve on their abilities? Because the professions, every profession continues to grow and change. And every student, new generation of students is a little bit different than the one that came before. A lot of similarities, but some differences. So we work on that.
So Dr. Duffy, you alluded to there's a small amount of professional development days offered to you to do this work, right? What would be the ideal number of days in a year?
That's a really tough question to answer. You know, I, I, you know, so yeah. I guess, I guess the way, the way that I will answer that is that I don't know that it's about the days of professional development as it is how we spend the days we have. And one of the things that's really good to see is the coherence we have across the district with job-embedded time for our collaborative teams. Every school has at least weekly collaborative professional development time where they bring collaborative teams together, engage in professional development, look at continuous improvement plans, examine their data, hold each other to high standards, try to find ways that they're going to engage students at a higher level. And what we're seeing is that work, regardless of what school you go to, elementary, middle, high, early childhood programming, in any of them, there's an alignment and a common language that you see from the work we've been doing district-wide, which tells me, and I think tells our team, that we see that there's a focus and that rather than having competing priorities, we're really trying to make sure that we're all looking at a common goal and common work based around these plans and based around our mission. So in terms of ideal days, I'll say my hope would be that we're, we're learning and engaging in some sort of professional development every day, as much as we can, even if it's just one thing or one collaborative conversation that's going to help, help each of our adults grow in some way.
Thank you. Great presentation, thank you. Well, Rick, we are about to hear from you again on the school calendar options, focusing on the 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022. Since we talked last, I had, you know, Hopkins made their, adopted their calendars and sent them out. It was interesting to see what they had done and, and how they had addressed the 2020 November election date. My memory is they picked it for Professional Development Day, but perhaps that's what you're going to tell us.
No, well, that's, that's just one, one thing. So Superintendent, I was just wondering here if we're, okay. So we're going to have a little bit more discussion, provide a little more feedback. And then as Superintendent, I believe, shared with the board, we're going to ask that we not take action tonight on either of the calendars, but give you a little more updates and then tell you what is still ahead. So we have met with, you know, a number of our bargaining groups and our largest bargaining group, the teachers. We met with them last week, I believe it was Thursday. And they wanted some additional time to survey the members and get the feedback, just make sure that we, you know, are, because I think we have time, I think it's good to take the time. And we asked that the teachers get their feedback to the administration by, I think it was December 4th or 5th, and which would give us enough time to put together the recommendations for the next board meeting on the 9th. So we, we have talked with DPAC. I know Matt Thomason and Board Leader Tombeck were at that meeting. And there was, there is no perfect calendar. And everybody can see issues with one or the other and benefits of one or the other. And so it's hard to get definitive, we must do Calendar A or Calendar B. So there was a lot of discussion about the conundrum, and good luck on that for most of it. Is that fair?
I think the good luck, we wouldn't want to have to make this decision, was probably the only consensus point that was offered about the calendar.
Okay.
From DPAC.
So, you know, as, as Board Chair mentioned, Hopkins, we believe, has decided to not hold school on, on Election Day. I would say that our administrators and I believe the, the general feeling of the executive team of the teachers would, would if we didn't have to hold school on Election Day, that would be better than holding school on Election Day. But they also said that it provides some challenges, especially at the middle school where they grade on quarters. It makes, it makes a really lopsided first and second quarter. The semesters are good, but the quarters are unbalanced. And so they feel like they would be jamming a lot of content into that first quarter. And so they, they, they were, they were concerned about that, but it wasn't an obstacle that couldn't be overcome. So, and then the, the MEA, you know, the, the historical four-day break over the third and fourth, Thursday and Friday of October, there was a lot more emotion from the teachers' group around that. And that was, you know, it's a, it's, it's a tradition. It's a, it's actually a good mental health break to go hard, pause, recharge, and come back again. And then we did run into the conundrum of people who may work for St. Louis Park may have their own children in other districts. And if, if, if we get off-sync with them, then that's also could be a problem. I believe what I heard was Rose Montapalde Egan, who eliminated the MEA in that second year, has now changed its mind and is, is, I think reconsidering putting those days back into their calendar. So it keeps moving. So if there's any questions that you've been thinking about since then, I would field any questions. Otherwise, we'll come back with a more definitive recommendation at the next meeting.
I just wanted to bring up one point that was mentioned at DPAC, which I think Superintendent Ossai and Matt and I all thought was an excellent thought, is if we were to consider, or if we were to cancel school on the election for Election Day, we need to take into account the primary day because this is the first year that Minnesota is going to be having a primary. And if we are concerned about members of the public having unfettered, unfortunately, potentially relatively unfettered access to our buildings on Election Day, really the same concerns are going to be raised on Primary Day, which is March of this coming year. So this would affect the calendar, of course, for this year that's already passed. But it just feels disingenuous to have this conversation about Election Day and not take into account the fact that it's a primary day. Now, I think the, the primary distinction is going to be the amount of people. Obviously, Election Day is going to have, you know, a greater amount of people. But being that this is the first year we've ever had a Minnesota primary, there's really, it, it's going to be hard to tell what that voter turnout is really going to be looking like. But I think we do need to consider that and take that into account as we're evaluating our Election Day options. And then I just wanted to remind everybody that we are still considering what to do about Rosh Hashanah for the following calendar year. And DPAC's consideration on that was, again, a lot of empathy for the difficult decision. But, you know, an overwhelming desire, obviously, not to be insensitive to members of our population, members of our students. And we learned, for example, that 82 high school students, just in the high school, called out, or requested the excused absence for last year for Rosh Hashanah. So 82 students just in, you know, in this one building. So I think one of the things that I'm still considering that I would ask the board to kind of keep in mind is the idea of just going ahead and pushing that start of that school year one day. I know I had made the comment last meeting that Rosh Hashanah is technically three days, but it is true that for the vast majority of people who but it is true that for the vast majority of people who celebrate the Jewish New Year, it really is, the first day is the most important day of the holidays. So that would be the day that the most amount of the students would be impacted.
That's good to hear, Mary, and to know, and that was my suspicion, but you've confirmed it. And it's terrible to miss the first day of school when everything's getting started. I, I would support you in that request as you, as the district takes a look at what to do about the first day of school. The other just observation that I, I want to make and just remind us of is the 2016 presidential election posed some real challenges to students and teachers the day after because that's where everybody was gathered, that's where everybody was reacting, that's where people were struggling, and we put a huge burden culturally on our teachers and our students to have them in school the day after that particular election, which we might repeat or might not repeat coming up. And whether, you know, we hold school on that day or not, which is not part of the conversation, I really would just remind us to have some advanced planning for how we're going to manage that because we just don't know what's coming, and we need to be mindful of the whole people that we have here.
I was going to ask just a thought, since you were thinking about this. If, if, for instance, on this calendar that's up there, if we did move the start of school from the 8th to the 9th, would we still have our kindergarteners come on the 10th? So there would be a, you know, a one-day different start for kindergarteners and a that year? Just thoughts, I don't know if you had thought about that.
I would like to do that if we don't have to mess up, mess up, that's a terrible way to say that. If we don't have to alter the schedule any more than absolutely necessary, I think that would be great. But if Superintendent Osai tells us that there's a compelling reason for a two-day separation, then-
So what is, what is the intent of having kindergarteners start a day later?
With the kindergarteners currently, well, in our current calendar and this proposed calendar, that gives kindergarten teachers an opportunity to individually conference with each parent. As, as the kindergarten's first, you know, year of school, it's really an opportunity for that family to establish relationship and understand the schooling process more, more intentionally and deeply. So could we do it in a day? I think that that's a question that we should talk to, figure out what we would need to do to do it in a day if, if that change is made.
Or depending on what the district chose to do with that first, that Tuesday, the 8th, if not, if it was, forgive me for not remembering exactly the rules around the teacher contracts and everything, but if that was an optional day or if that, would it be possible for there to not be students in the classroom, but the teachers could still be there, meeting with families, kindergarten teachers?
Maybe. And that, we're, we're bounded by a couple of things. One of them is the teacher contract has 185 duty days. So if that was one of their duty days and it wasn't a instructional day, then, you know, we would have to make up another instructional day somewhere else without causing, without, you know, without going over the 185 and, and-
And then we're getting into whether our teachers would be celebrating, you know, those teachers in particular would be celebrating Rosh Hashanah as well, and whether that would affect their personal schedule. So that might just make things more complicated, but-
You know, I, I think it's certainly worth the conversation, you know. I think Joe brings up a good question because there are some school districts that do not, they start their kindergarteners on day one. So I think there's some things we can learn from those school districts about how they prepare and engage families and help them feel supportive without kindergarteners starting two days late, if this change were to occur.
So one thing that I think is part of this tradition and one thing we've talked about with our strategic plan and our strategic delimiters, we don't necessarily always have to do everything the way we always did it, right?
Right.
But having the older kids on the bus for a couple of days to kind of sort that transition out before the kindergarteners start riding the bus traditionally has been a beneficial thing for the kids who have to ride the bus. And we're also looking at a start time change in all of this. So I think there, I think there's some compelling factors to think about related to tradition, not being bound by tradition, and getting a little more information from other districts that don't do things the way we've always done them.
The start time would be the year before.
Yeah.
So I, I just want to support the idea that, the idea that Mary brought up of not holding school that day, and I guess request that we would see a calendar that would, that we would have an option, I guess, that would, that would move that, that first day of school off of the holiday. I just, the more I thought about this after our last meeting, I just thought, I mean, and Mary said, you know, 82 students, and I think about, in particular, our sixth graders and our ninth graders going to school at a new school, trying to build community, and you miss the first day, that, that just does not sit well, I think, with me. So I would really like to see another, another option here of what that would look, what that could look like with the kindergarten accounted for and the various, I guess there would be, there would have to be another day somewhere made up. So I'd just like to see an option.
And to just reiterate, I know that we have school Rosh Hashanah most other times when, excuse me, Rosh Hashanah is between Monday and Friday. But to Ann's point, we are really talking about, because this is such a unique situation with the first day of Rosh Hashanah falling on the first day of school, that's why we're having this conversation.
Okay.
And I, I assume we're not having school start the week before because construction?
That, that was, that is a, one of the biggest year with the high school, I believe, and it would just be unlikely to be ready.
I'm trying to think of the most unpopular things I can say before I leave the board.
Okay.
And, and one of them was, why don't we start school before Labor Day?
Yeah.
It's always, it's always-
We could go to the end of June. That's another option, too.
That's equally popular. Let's do both. And then have a winter break that's two days long. That's all, all the most popular.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Next up on our agenda is policy development, first reading 706, Acceptance of Donation and Gifts. Laura, I don't see any suggested changes. Am I reading it correctly?
You're correct. There are no recommended MSBA changes.
You know, my one comment on this is I know that we do require a receipt be given for donations of over, of a hundred or more, $100 or more. Does that, do we send thank yous?
I think that is a question for the business office. I would imagine that for donations that are larger, we do, but for the $100 or more, that would be something that we want to make sure we put into practice.
Yeah, I would just be curious if we could find out if we do have a practice of sending thank yous to people who make donations to us, if that's included in the receipt or if not, and, and if we want to add that as part of the policy, depending on what impact that would have on the, on the business office. But that's my, that's my one thought on this policy.
Would the thank you be a procedure, part of the procedures, or would you want it in the policy?
That's an excellent question. I was thinking in the policy, but the mechanics of how one does it would be in the procedures.
I'm wondering if often the thank you, I think you would come from the, the place where the gift is going to. So on our, on our consent agenda, I think today, we have a couple of gifts are designated to a specific site from like a, like a PTO to a site, and so the, the thank you would come from that site.
Can I just add? That's been our standard procedure from what I've been aware, that the, kind of the direct recipient or the people that benefit most directly from that have sent a thank you note. I don't think it's procedurally been built into this is our practice, but I know that it's happening in that way from just experience and watching it.
I mean, on a high level, as a board, I would like, as a board, you know, we want to be grateful. So at the high level, I can see why we would may consider, put that in the policy at that level. But then how it gets to be implemented is the next question. I want to have a policy we can't implement. Maybe you could just look into that and give us your thinking on it when it comes back for review. So any other comments? I'm assuming not, seeing no hands raised. Okay, we're going to move on then to the consent agenda. Anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing, hearing no one. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved six oh. Next, we are up to the action agenda. It is recommended that the school board approve the appointment of George Hagaman to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission for the city of St. Louis Park. Aston, any comments on this for us?
Yeah, I can add that George is, was a longstanding member of the Parks and Rec's Advisory Commission and has served the commission for several years in, in a very high level. And I know that as we, you know, think about all of the potential people that could have filled this role, that there was, you know, better candidate than George.
Is there a motion to approve appointing George Hagaman to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission?
No.
Moved by Ann. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion?
I, I know George, too, and I have interacted with him as part of his role as the Park and Rec, um, the Park and Rec Commission and agreed with Aston's recommendation.
And thank you for his willingness to continue serving on behalf of the board.
Yes, indeed. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie six oh. Next up is acceptance of the audit report. Is, it is recommended that the school board approve the fiscal year 2019 audit report as presented. Is there a motion?
No.
Moved by Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Is there any discussion beyond the discussion we've already had?
Again, just to thank the business office, Patricia and Brooks, and also MMKR for the great, great work and the presentation of the work that we saw tonight.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie six oh. And I second everything Ann said. Patricia, carry it back to your team, please. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have communications and transmittals. Go ahead, Karen.
I just want to thank Jody Hudson-Beller and the high school team and the music departments for putting on Legally Blonde. It was a smash. They did a great job, great singing, great acting, great costumes, great set, and it's an example of collaboration with the community because it takes everybody to get it done, and they do the work at such a high level. So they, they did a tremendous show, and we're, I'm really grateful that our little district in the metro can still have theater, band, orchestra, sports, academics, and kids who can do multiple things. That's rare and wonderful. So kudos to the theater department.
As we may have mentioned once or twice, we've got some departing board members here. And so we are very excited to be hosting a reception to honor their service to the district, to tell them how much we are going to miss them. And everyone is invited to come and celebrate with us. So that, if you can make it, please come out on Monday, December 9th at 5:30 in this high school building in the cafeteria. Come eat cake and toast like it's their service and their departures. We, for one, are really excited to get Joe out of here with, with all of these crazy ideas about extending the school here. And then at the beginning of the school board meeting, we will be talking about their awesomeness a little bit more. So please come and join us for that if you can. This will be their last time, the December 9th, sitting up here at the table, especially for Chair Gore's 16 years. She has been sitting here every two weeks or so. So.
We need you at the organizing meeting, though.
We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Ann.
And once you've had your cake, stay for the truth and taxation meeting. Come on upstairs, 6:30, same, same, same building, 6:30 PM in this room, the truth and taxation meeting, once you're all sugared up.
Anyone else? Well, everyone, thank you very much. Have a great Thanksgiving holiday, and we'll see you all in December. Check your city school board calendar because we've got some amazing holiday concerts coming up. All right. Thanks, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Moved by Ann. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carrie six oh.